Good afternoon.
Mushroom, isn't it? It's a poisonous mushroom. It is a poisonous mushroom.
We are now recording. Hello. We are back online with our afternoon work session. Our afternoon portion of the Washington County Board of Commissioners work session for Tuesday, March 11th. And boy, have we got an exciting topic for you all today. We're going to be going over the first round of voter surveys for the library levy and the next steps with regard to our two levies. So we've got a great, big team of presenters. And so without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant County Administrator Marnie Kyle. We also have Assistant County Administrator Erin Calvert and all the subject matter experts we could ever hope for, both in the room and online. So welcome.
Thank you.
The roses between the thorns is what I would say.
It was man. It was such a lovely start.
Okay, moving on. Coming in hard.
Oh, my goodness.
You took the wind right out of my sails.
I am not participating in that.
All right. Well, thank you Chair Harrington and Board. As you introduced, my name's Marnie Kyle. I'm one of the ACAs and the Washington County Cooperative Libraries are now in my portfolio. I am thrilled, by the way. Today, as you mentioned and you've seen, we have assembled the full levy dream team to provide an important update and ask you to consider and to provide direction for staff related to the timing of our next round polling. So we're going to begin the afternoon with a summary of the first round of levy polling. Thank you. With the first round of the levy polling from EMC, our experts that are online with us today. Then we'll spend some time reviewing the library steering committee engagement and their recommendations and the timelines for next steps towards referral. So one thing that I want to be sure that you are aware of is that we understand the important deadline that our board has provided us, thank you, for approval and referral of the levy no later than June 3rd. We also understand the crucial nature of robust community education and the work that the board, of the board, to ensure that we have a successful outcome in November. So we have, as you will hear today, taken these considerations and balanced them with the importance of understanding voter sentiment as close to the referral as possible. Therefore, you will hear a recommendation and have an opportunity to discuss and direct staff today about your comfort in pushing the second round of polling, joint polling closer to the board action on May 27th. So as you can see, as you hear from staff today, have in the back of your minds the questions that we'll ask at the end. Do you need more information? Do you have questions? Is the board comfortable with increasing the library levy to 15 cents? And is the board? Sorry.
Buy 15.
Buy 5.
Not 250.
Right, buy 15 cents. Thank you. I'm like, what did I say? And is the board comfortable with the compressed timeline that we'll share with you today? And with that, I will turn this over to Sienna and the EMC team. And I will try to work the clicker, so just let me know when you want to advance.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for having us today. And I know my colleague Jessica is a new face to you also. I'm going to let her introduce herself briefly before I begin.
Hi all. I'm filling in for Ian Stewart. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Jessica Polsky Sanchez. I'm a principal with EMC Research, so here to help present the survey results. And I will give it back to Sienna.
Terrific.
Great. Thank you again. And yes, okay, great. Starting right in with our methodology. So just a reminder here, we did the same methodology we did for the public safety survey back in December. This time around, though, we doubled the sample size so that we could test two different levy amounts. So this was a mixed mode survey of likely November voters across Washington County. And we used a mix of landlines, cell phones, and then email and text invitations. And we conducted the survey back at the end of January and into early February. So as Marnie already mentioned, we're excited to have the third survey so we can get another pulse check a little later in the year and we can obviously talk timeline later on. As I said, the overall sample size was 800 and those overall results have a margin of error of plus or minus three and a half percentage points, whereas the questions that went to half of our respondents have a higher margin of error of about five points. And then with that, we can go on into the results. So you can go forward two slides. All right. So in both the December survey and then again in January, we asked voters if they feel things in Washington County are going in the right direction or if they are off on the wrong track. In December, this number was quite positive at 69% right direction. And we see that positivity remains now with 73% saying things are going in the right direction. So again, I'm probably going to say this a few times today, but we are very glad to be doing that third survey as late as you all are comfortable so we can see how the local mood evolves as things are shifting at the national level. I know there's a lot of uncertainty right now. I haven't checked through the news yet today, but I know every day there's a lot happening right now. And we see that this measure of optimism tends to be correlated with how voters are feeling about their own economic situation, which in turn tends to influence their willingness to support revenue measures. So we saw back in the December survey, as you may recall, and then we saw again this time around that voters who say things are going in the right direction are much more likely to support a levy replacement than those who are feeling more pessimistic. So this measure is very tied to support and we want to know where it is after a few more months or a couple more months at least of events have unfolded in the national political environment. All right. And then we can move on to some ratings of the library system itself. Okay. So we next ask voters to rate the job both their local library and WCCLS as a whole are doing on a scale from excellent to poor. With the positive ratings shown here in blue, you can probably all see from where you're sitting, there's a lot of blue on this slide. There's very little red, just a handful of negative ratings. Most of that, just about 10% of what we lumped together as negative ratings is really fair. So overall, a lot of positivity here. And there's also not really any distinction between the two entities. Ratings of both just very positive with half excellent ratings and then another 40% good ratings. And I will say here, we don't often see ratings of public agencies this positive. So Washington County voters definitely appreciate their library system. And I'm going to pause here because I think Jessica can echo that point from all of her experience.
Yeah, absolutely. These numbers overwhelmingly positive relative to what we typically see when it comes to ratings of public entities, in particular, you know, almost universal excellent or good. But really those strong ratings, the excellent ones stand out to me with, you know, half essentially of voters rating their libraries as excellent is a really, really positive and striking result.
We'll try to not let it go to our heads.
Too late.
They also love the services that the libraries are providing as guests. Exactly. Good cue for the next slide. So later in the survey, we asked voters how high of a priority different library services are to them on a one to seven scale. Here, we're showing the top end of the scale with the sevens or very high priorities in the dark blue and then the total priority over on the far right. All items on this slide and then the next tier were presented in randomized order. So not everybody saw them in the same sequence. On this first slide of top tier priorities, again, we don't see a huge amount of distinction. Right, yes, thank you. All these core services are high priorities to over 40% of voters and then a priority to between three quarters and 80% of voters. So a lot of consensus that on these main services the library is providing, they are all quite important. And this set, in case the font is a little bit small for you all in the detail, includes core services such as reading and learning support for kids, central support, linking libraries together, purchasing books and materials for the catalog, ensuring libraries stay open on their current schedule, and then continuing children's reading events. And then on the next slide, here we have intensity and overall priorities that are a bit lower, but nearly everything tested is still a priority to most voters. It's just really downloadable and streaming media and then the loan program for other types of objects that are a little bit more of a niche appeal, at least in terms of perceived importance. Keep in mind, this is priority. This isn't necessarily interest in this program. So that doesn't mean that voters aren't interested in having them, you know, as part of the library system. Okay. And then before I move on to the levy replacement, which I know you probably all are, is the part you're all waiting for, but any questions about anything we've covered so far before we move on?
None here.
All right.
I do have one comment on the slide eight, which is this one, I think, when they were talking about, no, it's one before that, when they asked the question about ensuring libraries, libraries stay open on their current schedules, 80%. And we've talked about that in our meetings about the importance of maintaining the hours that we have and certainly not having cuts in hours. To me, that was real affirmation.
Yes. And I know, I think there's a conversation in the last steering committee about, you know, the budget process and obviously if we need to update that wording at all in the third survey and test a different variation of it, if it turns out that's not going to be, you know, the case, just let us know and we can take a look. But obviously that is important to voters. So, you know, they would love to maintain those if it's possible. All right. And we can move on a couple of slides to the initial support. Yes. All right. So on the levy replacement itself, we presented respondents with a parallel question to what has appeared in the ballot title in the past, including the levy rate and what that amounts to for the average homeowner in the first year. One note here, this question came before the service priorities we just went over. So this was a clean read. We hadn't yet reminded voters of all the good things the current levy is getting them, which obviously they all love, but we just gave them this information to start. So we're not biasing them by reminding them of what this is paying for. As I noted earlier, we asked half of our respondents about each potential levy amount. So on the left, we have the 32% 32 cent levy and then on the right, the 37 cent levy. And taking into account the margin of error here, support is essentially the same for both amounts at about 60%. So very positive. I want to pause on that for a moment before I give you my caveat because that is good news. Okay, now let I let you observe that for a second. We do also want to pay attention, though, here to the strong support numbers in dark blue. That makes up about half of our total support at present. And to surpass the majority threshold, we are going to need to convert some of those less committed supporters. And then I think Jessica had a comment here too. She wanted to add about that right direction, wrong track number we looked at earlier.
Yeah, I just wanted to note because, you know, as you heard Sienna mention when we went over the numbers of voters who say things in the area are going in the right direction versus those who say things are off on the wrong track. And as Sienna noted, we do often see those numbers trend along with how voters are feeling they are doing economically. So in this uncertain environment, it's important for us to know, how do those who say things in the right direction are going in the right direction, you know, how many of them support a measure versus how many of them support? And then on the flip side, among those who say things are off on the wrong track, how do they feel about this potential measure? And indeed, as you might expect, we see among the small portion, the roughly one in four who say things are off on the wrong track, support is considerably lower. So of course, we want to keep our eye on that. That is not necessarily a causal relationship, but it's just something we want to, you know, do our due diligence on and make sure to note going forward.
They wouldn't be a good firm to work with if they didn't temper all the messages.
Thank you for doing your due diligence. Appreciate it.
We're happy to have the good news to report. We just always want to make sure that we're giving you, you know, the context to anchor it in.
Works for us.
All right. And some more good news on the next slide. So we next did the math for voters and told them how much more the replacement levy would be over what they're already paying for the current levy, both per year and per month. And we always hope that this math helps with support because it's reminding folks, you know, this isn't all a new tax. There's just a small increase over what they're already paying. Here for the 32 cent levy, that amounts to $39 a year. And then for the larger levy, $57 a year. For both amounts, providing this information increases support a bit more on the smaller levy, which makes sense because it's also a smaller increase. But for both levy amounts, it solidifies some of that support into higher support in dark blue. All right, moving on. So next, we provided some factual information about the specific benefits of the levy. Like with the service priority list we saw earlier, these were also all shown in random order. We just have them in the same sequence here that they tested in the polls. So we can refer back to this if there are any questions about specific text of items. We've shorthanded them on the next slide just for readability, but we can move on to that one. And here you can see how the statements all stacked up against one another. For each one, we asked how important that information is to know in thinking about the library services levy replacement. And the pattern we see here is pretty consistent with what we saw or what you all saw in past years polling, where benefits for children and students rise to the top and are pretty universally rated as important. There's not really anything we tested here, though, that doesn't resonate with most voters. There are just some differences in intensity as you move down the slide. But still, job and career health, you know, test as the lowest here. 42% say that's very important. 79% say that's important. So a lot of good information here that can be used for public information and for communicating with voters down the road. All right. And then after respondents heard all that information, we asked about their support for the levy once again. And at this point, we see support for both amounts rise to about 70%. Basically no difference here. And the larger levy sees the bigger increase in support on this question. So for the smaller levy, really just communicating that increase over what they're currently paying drives a jump in support. For the larger levy, it takes a little bit more information about all the good things the 37 cents is going to give folks. So we want to make sure that if you do go forward with the 37 cent levy, you know that, you know, communicating with voters about the benefits is going to be important in securing that support. Okay. And then finally, to mimic what would happen if there was a push against the measure or just a more negative environment, which, you know, we all know that there's a lot of fluctuation right now, we essentially gave voters an out by presenting a negative argument, invoking inflation and taxes before asking about their support again. We then asked about the public safety levy, informing voters it's going to be on the same ballot before asking about the library levy one final time. And so you can see the impact on support for both of those asks here. The negative argument is in the second to last place. I don't know if you all can see my cursor, but after the negative, we are at 67% support for the 32 cent levy and then 66% support for the 37 cents. So again, in pretty much the same place, a little bit lower than we were after all of the positive information about benefits. And then after we talk about the public safety levy, ask how folks will support that one and tell them how much it'll be, we see a little bit more of a drop back to around where we began. And again, both of the levies are basically in the same place. All right. And so that is it for the survey itself, but we also have a slide that we had for you for public safety with the historical context here. So this shows you how things stack up over time compared to previous renewals and then also the polling that was done before each of those elections. So here in green, we have the election results and then blue are the polling results from before each of those elections going back to 2010. Beneath each one, we have what the levy amount was at the time in gray. So you can see between November 2010 and the 2015 poll is when the levy amount went up from 17 to 22 cents. So that was the prior replacement and then last time around, it was a renewal. I think two big takeaways from this slide. One is that so far, the community has supported the library system at pretty consistent levels over time, really regardless of what the actual figure is in terms of the levy rate. There's obviously been some fluctuation in that over time. But, you know, looking at support today for the 32 cent levy, 62%. That's also what was seen for the 17, 17 cent levy back in the 2010 poll. Obviously, all of these polls had a margin of error. Another thing over time, though, is that the election outcome has tended to be a little bit stronger than the polling. That could just be margin of error on the polls, but it could also reflect the fact that between each of these polls and Election Day, there was some public information and campaign communication in between. One outlier here to point you though, 2020, we saw the highest support seen in polling in, I think, December or January, that poll was done, 74% support for the levy. Then COVID happened and the election was in May 2020, so a few months in. And there we saw lower support on Election Day than the polling. Obviously, a lot was happening during that time. It was very weird and volatile and nobody knew what was coming next. I will say, though, we are in another one of those weird and volatile times right now. We don't know what's going to happen, you know, over the next nine months or so, moving towards November. So this is again, another place, I just want to say, you all will talk about what you're comfortable with for when we do the third survey, but that we're doing it at all is great news here because it will give us better information after a little bit more of the uncertainty unfolds. Okay. And then finally, just some key takeaways for you. So summing up, we do see that likely November voters remain optimistic about the direction of the county, at least for now. As we've emphasized, this is strongly tied to support for either levy replacement tested. So that also means that although things are really positive right now, things shifting in a more negative way economically or otherwise can create a more challenging environment. So that is our big caveat here. WCCLS and local libraries are really highly regarded in the community and voters see core library services as a high priority. In the current environment, both levy replacement amounts tested look viable. Really, the biggest place where we see a difference in support is after we explain the cost increase over what voters are paying right now with higher support at that point for the smaller levy. But once we communicate more, there's essentially no difference. So as I said earlier, the higher levy would benefit from a strong communications effort using all the means you have available to you in terms of public information to make sure voters know what they would be getting for that 37 cents. That's not to say that you wouldn't want to communicate with voters no matter what the amount is moving forward, but it would be especially for 37 cents. And then it's also important to note that about half of the support for both replacement amounts is soft and in the somewhat category today. Historically, we've seen that a lot of these voters do wind up supporting libraries at the ballot in the end, but that support needs to be solidified to get over the majority threshold. And then finally, in this survey, as you know, the only other measure we tested was the public safety measure towards the end of the survey. Our next step, though, is going to be working with staff on the third and final survey. As we work on that questionnaire, we'll be keeping an eye on the status of the metro measure, talk about if we want to include it, assuming it still looks like it's moving forward to November. And then the final survey is going to be designed to give us a clean read on both the library and public safety measures and also that really important final temperature check we've been talking about on voter mood as you are moving forward to the ballot. So that's about four slides on the library levy, but we are happy to take any questions you have. And then we also have the public safety numbers if you did want to take a peek at those.
I'd like to make a comment. Thank you for presenting this information. And I think one of the pieces of our discussion that isn't necessarily represented here is the fact that when, when these numbers are so close for both 32 and 37, I really feel like we have to look to the future and say, if we can, if we can do this at 15, it, it takes some heat off of us into the next levy cycle five years later. I think that that's an important piece here as well. So, you know, I, we don't know what, what's going to happen to our community's response after the budget is approved. And we've got the effects of the chaos at the federal government level that we're anticipating may have an effect as well. But I still think that these numbers are so close that it's our responsibility to make sure that we continue to provide library services at the highest level that we can. Do you want to add anything, Jerry?
Not, not about that. There was a couple of other comments I was going to make, but I'll wait until we get to move on to that.
I agree with the comment about planning for the future and making the best long, long-term decision. And I think based on the data, it's pretty compelling to make the 37 cent ask.
We also have the opportunity for May if we needed it. I mean, that's.
Of next year.
That's not what we want. We make the best decision for a positive outcome for November. And, you know, regardless of, I would, I believe I would be in support of 37 cents.
Well, I think from, too, if we could go back to slide 11. Because we had the conversation with EMC that, do we talk about how much we're increasing the levy or what the levy rate will be? Or do we talk about the dollar increase? And I think that's what this, that's the differential you see on the, on there because general consensus is that people don't know how to calculate what that, what a 10% increase does to your tax bill versus a 15 cent or whatever. So it's a little bit of a guess. And what was interesting to me is that at 32 cents, it polled at 62%. And when, but when you told them the dollar, it went to 67%. So again, you do the math for them and, and then they can make the decision. But if you just tell them what the levy rate is going to be, they're kind of going, um, I don't know. How's this feel?
It's a lack of clarity. I mean, for a typical property owner, it's a lack of clarity for a typical voter.
You know, most people don't sit down and say, what's my assessed value? And I'm going to increase this 10 cents and what's that mean to me? And they don't do that math. Anyway, this, I thought that was revealing.
So is this where we go back to the three questions or?
We, we couldn't provide some updates on kind of where the steering committees are at in our recommendation around timeline and then go back to the questions, but it's.
Great.
You, Chair.
So you're trying to see if we just have questions at this point?
On the findings, yeah. The polling.
I don't have any questions. Job well done.
Yeah. The only thought I have, and I'm making direct eye contact to Lisa, but I guess look at all of you, is I'm trying to, I was looking at this information and I was trying to reconcile the last presentation that we had about the process improvement that's going on on WCCLS side and along with this levy. And how do we bring the two together? Or better yet, what are you hearing? How did the two align? Especially the positive information when the staff were online, were going over the positive information. What positive information will change with the other side, the process improvement part that's going on that would have an impact here? And I think the comment Commissioner Willie made is specifically calling out the 80% people wanting things to stay the same in particular side and about the time, the hours of the library was pretty, I think, to use Commissioner's words. was pretty, I think, to use Commissioner's words, was pretty compelling, right? So I don't know how we align those and then how you loop the board as a board, what you're hearing outside of that process improvement in this. I I'm just feeling a bit of a gab information for myself um when I was doing my own homework with us, so.
Thank you. So um uh this is actually a really great segue. If I can kind of like sort of, so that was a, it's a great question, and it sort of speaks to something I was gonna mention on this slide, which is that um we know we've been going through the funding and governance evaluation process with our partners. And like you were saying, we had that work session, I think it was February fourth or something like that, the most recent one. And so what the process recommended from all of our partners was two things, well, three things. But one of them was the forty-five hours of base service level um that we would centralize the collection management. And uh that with those sort of commitments for the process and and our operational model going forward, that the the recommendation was at least a thirty-two cent levy rate to so to provide the revenue to support those service levels. So that's sort of how they tie together. Um it's the savings from that centralization, the commitment for base service hours. Together, those really get us to a minimum of thirty-two cents. And I think that ties into the conversation we had at the steering committee. And if I'll just sort of jump to um the slide here, is that we really had some robust conversations. Um and I think the the committee is, as Commissioner Tresley said, is recommending a thirty-seven cent rate. And I think uh as we saw at the February fourth work session, I think one of the comments that came up towards the end from the commission was that that um you know, the assumptions that we built, the financial assumptions we built into that model were fairly optimistic with a four-point-two-five percent assessed value over the life of the next levy cycle. And so um I think the discussion we had, and I don't wanna speak for you commissioners, but I think was that looking at some potential instability or volatility in the economy in the future, we may wanna look at a thirty-seven cent to help mitigate any any um decreases in assessed value, for example, and just provide us with that operational stability going forward.
Yeah, a little bit more long-term. So that we're not coming back in five years and saying, we didn't ask for enough five years ago, and now we gotta ask for another ten cents. That might be um, we like to look a little bit further out on the horizon. Especially when we have polling results that look good, this good, and the delta between thirty-two and thirty-seven was so small that um, yeah, we're we're thinking much further up in five years, I think.
When I go to the next slide, I can just
I just wanna verify that um I skipped through the appendix slides that have the public safety because it seemed like you were ready to move on to, okay, I'm getting thumbs up. Okay.
Anya, did you wanna say something?
Uh no, it was answered. I will just underscore, so um Commissioner, if I, the governance and the levy process are going hand in hand. And so um as Lisa Tattersall had underscored, just the thirty-two cents, and I wanna say the thirty-seven cents, I wouldn't say it gives us a slight breathing room. However, we also anticipate that the inflationary pressures that we're seeing right now are not going to just automatically ease. Also with our library system, we also have, um there's really three prongs to that. There's WCCLS, um uh levy, there is the portion of the county's permanent rate. And then there's the portion that our cities and nonprofit um libraries. And they're all kinda, they feel a bit wobbly right now. So that breathing room also helps that all three legs have a bit of of breathing room in that model.
Um the last thing I wanted to just highlight with this slide was and Commissioner Willie um mentioned this already in reference to one of the EMC slides about, I think this was a having seen the monthly increase amount and the annual increase amount was really helpful for the committee as we were talking through the different rates. And so I just wanted to share that information here. I think the other thing we spent a lot of time talking about is just that the last increase in the levy was five cents back in twenty-fifteen. This is a quite a bit more that we're asking for. And so just really, we talked a lot about the importance of that robust community engagement and voter education. It's gonna be really important as EMC shared as well. Okay, for the next part, we wanna walk you through the proposed timeline for the levy proposals and ballot referral. Thank you, Marnie, for making slides. Um this is just a reminder slide, you've seen it many times before, but over the past several months, the work of the levies has been primarily in that blue triangle section of the graph on the left side, with survey planning, development, financial program analysis, and work with both the levy staff and the steering committees to understand the current service level and the potential investment areas. So we'll start moving into kind of the white area on the chart where the levy proposals begin to take shape, and there's some more concrete scenarios and services that are being considered for steering committee and ultimately your board's approval. Next slide. Um the next two slides also follow the attachment in your packet that's titled The Public Safety and Library Levies Work Plan and list a number of important milestones and dates. I know Marnie said this at the beginning, but I wanna just underscore that we know that your board has directed a no later than June third filing of both measures. And so um we are working backwards from that date. It's on the next slide, you can't see, but I just wanted to level set that for all of you. Ongoing right now is the steering committees continue to meet. Um in February, the Public Safety Steering Committee considered and discussed some of the current services provided by the levy and began to evaluate specific investment areas of the next levy. There's also been really productive discussion on the timing and timeline of that work in the steering committee that, of course, we're bringing forward to your board today. Um this month of March, the Public Safety Steering Committee is focused on reviewing the Public Safety and Justice White Paper, which, as you know, highlights many of the needs and the gaps of the Public Safety Continuum, and it's really serving as the anchor for our upcoming department meetings. So over the next three weeks, I'm going to be meeting with each department separately, and then we will all be coming together as a team to meet to really evaluate the specific investment areas and the service needs of the community. And as we know from the paper, many of our programs might be housed in a specific public safety department, but they impact the entire continuum and system. So knowing if we build or reduce in a certain area, it can have an impact on another department and on our service continuum for the community. So we are looking at all of that through the lens of the whole. So we can build scenarios again for steering committee and then again, ultimately for your board's consideration. And then the library steering committee, I think Lisa touched on that, but again, I know that you are all just focusing on the survey results and the polling needs related to the the question about the increased fifty cents. Um we had originally intentively planned and spoke with your board about conducting the second poll um for both levies in mid-April. But based on what you've heard today, EMC's recommendation to conduct the survey as close as possible to the date of the election, also combined with the uncertainty of the economy and all the other things going on, um we are recommending that EMC conduct poll number two on both levies during the weeks of May fifth, May fifth through the sixteenth, which is a little bit later than we had planned. And then due to that constrained timeline, that would mean that we would return to your board at work session on May twenty-seventh. EMC would present the polling results to your board. And then staff would follow that, much like today, with a presentation of the Public Safety and Library Levy Proposals. We would then proceed to your board's evening business meeting on that same day, May twenty-seventh, to present the proposals and ask your board to adopt the proposals for both the public safety and library levies. And if your board thinks it's helpful, staff could provide individual commissioner briefings on the levy proposals ahead of the May twenty-seventh work session. And clearly, for each of the steering committees, we would be working through that. Staff would be working through that with with each of the steering committee representatives. And next slide, please.
I have a question before you move on. I think um staff said and brought it up, the supportive housing services to reform measure. Would your timeline, May fifth to the sixteenth timeline change if that was also on the ballot? If you wanna get ahead or?
We are following that, and so I think that would be something that we would discuss, yeah, with the steering committees. We may need to, may need to move that. Um my sense was that it was not happening for the May ballot.
I don't think it would impact the the polling timeline so much as it might do we ask questions?
Right, we would include that in the polling.
In the polling, right, yeah. And they they're not they's metro, are we aware if they're also doing some polling about this issue or does that not impact us and it's irrelevant at this point?
Metro does do polling, they don't usually make it part of their work session pack like we do.
Okay, okay, that's that's very informative.
Okay, thank you. Um let's see, the following week, June third, staff would present at your business meeting and ask your board to consider and adopt the ballot title and language for both levies and direct staff to file the measures. And then staff would file both of those measures the following day on June fourth. And then in June, as we've discussed, with the political restrictions in place, staff would activate the speakers bureau and begin assigning staff for the tabling events throughout the summer and fall until Election Day. Next slide.
At what point, since you didn't enumerate it here or in the take, in the charts, uh at what point would our comms team be submitting the informational item to the Secretary of State for approval? I don't need to know the date, the work week, but just what general month or deadline that has to be submitted.
Yeah, I around the time of the filing is the short answer because there's a
Deadline for the filing or the actual filing?
Uh well, the deadline for the filing, we understand from your board, is June third.
No, no, no.
I mean, the the approval for
Office, the deadline for the filing is either the very end of August or early September. So I think what you're referring to is our actual filing.
Yes. Yeah, that's what I, that's what I meant to, yeah, thank you for that clarification. Yeah, and and to the extent that we as a board, as you as a are are direct, are giving us, uh you know, uh a consistent, clear, you know, direction, uh things can go a little faster on the staff end. So we can um explore with Secretary State's office ahead of your board's taking action on June third, some of the content that we can start vetting for the neutral, non-advocacy, um you know, educational effort.
You're talking about getting a safe harbor approval.
Yeah, the safe harbor process, exactly.
So I think it's important to uh to pause here for a second to make sure that the board is fully internalizing what what this recommendation has. The recommendation is actually pushing the edge of the envelope as late as possible. So the um we would have the work session Monday, excuse me, Tuesday, May twenty-seventh is the Tuesday after Memorial Day weekend. The good news, it's also after we have the budget approval. Uh so hopefully, your mind can switch off of one thing and go uh back into detailed levy land.
We can also be informed for the levy decisions about what the final budget. I think that's helpful, actually, to have the budget finalized.
But the levy doesn't take effect until uh fiscal year twenty
Right.
twenty-seven.
But knowing what difficult choices we've had to make and the and the and the size of them, to me, at least informs longer range planning.
Twenty-seven. So um so um the the, that isn't the challenge. The challenge is that you would be getting the final polling information in the afternoon. And in the evening, need to adopt a resolution and order for the levy proposal, which then has a very quick, one-week turnaround for the ballot language. So there's no wiggle room there. And so I just want, I mean, this is once and done, folks. You don't get to, if you if you mess up with the twenty-seventh, you really mess up the timeframe for the campaigns because there's June, July, August. No later than the second week of September, the full commitment needed for the outside campaign needs to be done. So um this is leveraging our learnings from the compressed timeframe we had in the first half of twenty-twenty. So that's all. I'm not trying to belabor the point.
But we have to be on it, paying attention, prepared, engaged, ready to be decisive. What am I missing?
So what it tells me, I'll bring it close to home. I usually take the Friday before Memorial Day off, which puts that much more pressure on the work team to get the slides done and published in the Thursday, May twenty-second board packet. And you're right, Catherine, it is our chair, there is that that compression of time here. And I think what we're, what we've been worried about, at least in our meeting, has been those outside pressures that we talked about and you know, just seeing one more month of of time in in relationship to those outside pressures and whether or not it changes voter positioning. That's all I'm We're just gonna be on a journey. There is no way we can influence things in Washington DC and all that. Of course not, but we can watch how they influence what happens here. And that was, that was the um, that was the thought.
Yep.
Okay, now none of us can say we didn't know that.
Yep.
Thank you. Next slides.
This is just summarizing what you've heard in detail already. Reminding you, as you might recall, we did one round of survey work already for both levies. And now we're uh with your direction today and uh green light, we're pushing the second round to that first two weeks in in May. Yeah, I don't
I think you've positioned us very well with the uh best available information, get the ballot ballot title and the measure statement done, so yep, our eyes are wide open. Now, back to the questions. Commissioners, round robin, who's who's ready?
I I can go. Uh first question, um I don't have any additional questions. And I'll also speak for myself and say that you all have done a great job of us who are not part of the steering committee educating us on this topic and giving us as much information as possible. Uh Commissioner Snyder and I are on the Public Safety Steering Committee and uh get an enormous information. And before that, Chair Harrington and myself was the steering committee members. So I know a lot of the work that goes into and I I still get one-on-one even after that and ask more questions and just clarify my own confusions. But you all have done a great job of taking a high-level, fifty-thousand-foot level and just bringing us on this journey with this levy. Um so I don't have any additional questions. Uh and I think of the the fifteen cents, by fifteen cents, I better make sure I say not to fifteen cents. That was a joke for you, Marnie, to say, I join you in that in solidarity. But the fifteen fifteen cents, I think, you know, the the, I don't have any problem going with the staff's recommendation, let me just say that. What I am concerned is the the governance, the whole conversation, that whole process improvement, lean process improvement you're doing. And the 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 underlying narrative of, you know, you might reduce your hours, the funding might be reduced, yet we're asking more. So I don't know how we connect to cities to say, we're not asking you more while also taking away more for some of your funds. So I'm not saying that exists right now, uh but I had a lot of questions at that conversation, and I've had conversations with the staff. So just connect the two and say, we're not asking you more to do less. So because I I I'm included, libraries matter to me, and and I take that very serious. And every other weekend or every weekend And every other weekend or every weekend, we're at the Beaverton City Library, as well as the Aloha Library, just giving a shout out to those two, because they get a foot traffic from us. So I I'm comfortable with this increase. I I do want us to just bring more coalition into this conversation and and align the two conversations at the same time, so that people know that, yeah, this is an investment into the future. And this is what it means. So and then, yeah, and I think of the timeline, I appreciate actually taking a pause and going over the the spreadsheet and what's in there. I don't have any, I'm comfortable with the timeline that you've proposed. And I appreciate the conversation we had, so now I can't say, I didn't know this compressed. So I will be available if you need to squeeze in. I make that myself, to be accessible and to be available, whatever you need with the compressed timeline. But so go forth and be surprised, good job.
And the second question?
I answered all three questions.
Okay, thank you.
May I go?
Yeah, sure.
I don't have additional questions. I don't know if this next part will be direction or not, but I am comfortable with the fifteen cent increase. I think, I guess I stated that already a month, a bit ago. I think with all the math and all the considerations and the polling, yes, I am comfortable with the compressed timeline, but we're going to have to be on our game for both both of the levies. And then I want to give a ca, a little bit of a cautionary tale. This is from political experience with another levy. And I'm going to guess this is not the way anybody's thinking about this right now, but this got spun on me in a city of Tiger levy situation a number of years ago. And that is that fifteen cent increase on a current twenty-two cent rate. I haven't done the exact math, but my my intuition tells me it's about a seventy percent increase. It it is it is close to double. It's not double, but it's close to double. Double would be forty-four, right, and we're talking about thirty-seven. So I'm intuiting the percentage to be about seventy percent. And it is important to me to make sure that the way that we're messaging and recognizing this, because I will be honest, I ended up being involved as mayor, putting something on, actually, before I was mayor, putting something on the ballot where I did not do that math in my head, and it became a very easy counter campaign point that I I just want to, I want to make sure people are cognizant of that, and that we know we need to do this, and there's rationale for it, and the money on an individual household is not massive. But the percentage may look like a lot to some people. I think there's rational reason for it. But on the campaign front or on the the education front for the community, I think it's important that we're ahead of that.
I think what it speaks to is for our next presentation in the end of May, we need the reminder of when the last time the library levy, each, for each of the levies, when there was a replacement levy. How long has that structure been in place? I think it goes to the cost map.
Well, my response to that, because I think we probably all, if we've been in the political very long, we've all been asked that question, and my response typically is, if you're paying two dollars and we ask you to pay four dollars, is that a hundred percent increase or is it two dollars? And so sometimes percentages of increase don't tell the whole story, and in this particular.
I completely agree, which is why I think we need to be in front of the messaging and be thinking about it. So that doesn't get thrown back at us in a way that we're not expecting.
Yeah, and and that's why, that's why, again, I will go back to that, the polling results of thirty-two cents versus the dollar number.
Yes.
And to me, that was indicative of the same.
Yes.
Comment about, wait a minute, it's a seventy percent increase, well, okay, really.
So I I really appreciate the interaction and the thoughts, and I, Chair, you're right, too, about looking at where where it was replacement and and how long we've been in this cycle, that's all part of the story.
They're each on different replacement cycle.
And I also want to put an emphasis on that education piece. We talked about this long and hard in our meetings about the importance of that education piece as well, and addressing all sides of the story, so that we take away the opportunity for for an attack type of approach here. The the last thing I want to say about this work is that I have really enjoyed the robust conversations we've had through our discussions. I mean, I I've learned so much about the library, how it functions, taking into consideration what we're looking at on the improvement cycles, as well as what we're looking at to make sure that we maintain a a strong system moving forward, and frankly, what the, all the interactions are between the different players. So Lisa has done, in my mind, a masterful job of pulling together the information so that at least I could could bring it in and look at how how we continue to do the work and leverage the opportunities. So thank you for the discussions, thank you for the work that you've done, and I appreciate the the work that the two of us have done together on this, too.
Well, and some other statistics, I think, you you brought out a lot of cost analysis, which is what we were asking for, about what's the cost to really keep our libraries open? And how much do the cities contribute, how much does levy? But from my standpoint, one of the most telling favorable supports of our libraries is the fact that this statement that I made a long time ago, probably eight years ago as mayor, that eight hundred thousand people darken the door of Brookwood Library every year, eight hundred thousand. And we weren't number one in in the counties, and I think Beaverton is number one. And so when you have that kind of of attraction to being community centers, is what they're referred to, that's the messaging that we've got to get out there. It's not just how much it costs, but it's, these are the number of people that utilize these facilities, and they absolutely have to be maintained.
So I'll finish up the round of three of us who aren't on the steering committee, but also for all five of us here. I share in the thanks for job well done, bringing bringing a really thoughtful program forward, leveraging the library funding and governance program. Work that has been going on reminds me, this is truly a cooperative library system. Washington County is not running the libraries like Monmouth County is. It's a very lean operation from the WCCLS Cooperative, all the way through each of the cities and nonprofits, very lean. But at the same time, incredibly efficient and accessible to community members. Historically, our community members have supported the local option levy asks because of the value that the libraries return to the community. These are tremendous local assets. And I think the proposal that you're moving forward continues that history. Yes, it will be ten years since the last replacement. There's been quite a bit of economic change, inflation, and so forth in that decade. And I just think you're, you've been going through all the due diligence, yes, yes, and yes, on on the three questions. So I'm very proud of the work that you're doing, and I feel very well served from the steering committee members. Thank you, and like my colleagues, I'm on the journey that you've worked out for us with both of the levies in tandem. So thank you. And thank you to our colleagues from EMC Research. I don't know if we cut them off there or if they're. Diana and Jessica, thank you very much for joining us today, great work.
You're very welcome, and we will see you again on May twenty-seventh.
Terrific, thank you. Okay, that's it for this topic. Thank you to the team and everyone else for your attendance today. That's it for our topic today. We will have our afternoon work session next week, next after, next Tuesday afternoon, and then our evening meeting on the eighteenth. And there will be four of us, since Commissioner Treese will be away on vacation. And so we'll see you all then. This meeting's adjourned, thank you.